You should have a new business on your agenda.
Okay, so, good point. All right, so let me add in, um, new business after other business. Okay. So, are you ready for us to start?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, good. Um, all right, good evening, I am calling to order the meeting of the Village of New Palt zoning board of appeals on April 8th, 2014. Um, I am Katie Silberger and board members Vicky Danskin and Ellen Rocco are here, our village planner, planning director Bren White, our village board liaison Sally Rhodes, and our secretary extraordinaire Rogan O'Donnell. On tonight's agenda, we have five new ZBA applications. Four of these applications are setback variances for the green acre property, and the fifth application is for a variance to add an additional unit to a three-bedroom house located on 11 Lincoln Place. So, um, the first item on the agenda will be the green acres properties. We will discuss each application one at a time, even though they are similar, they each need to have their own motion and action. So, the first application before us is for ZBA 1402, for 5 Taylor Street. They are requesting a 25-foot setback variance. Could I have a motion to discuss ZBA 1402?
And move.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. The motion carries. Um, would you like to join us at the table, or you're close enough?
Uh, sure.
I, yeah, in a way.
Sure to sit there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll sit near my.
Okay. Um, so, first of all, we have referrals from the planning director and the planning board attorney, and motions and actions from the planning board for reference to the four applications. So, from the planning director, we have the following memo. Do you want me to read it, or do you want to read it?
No, no, go right ahead.
Okay. "I have no problem with the requested front yard setback variances for ZBA 14 and ZBA, excuse me, ZBA 1402 and ZBA 1403, in order to build the houses further from the existing stream and thus closer to the street than is legally allowed in this R1 zone. In regards to ZBA 1405 and ZBA 1406, both of these variance applications request to build homes closer to the road than is allowed by zoning in this R1 district. Based on other homes in the area, the basic principles of new urbanism design, and the idea of clustering development toward the roads to allow for green space, I have no issue with granting the requested variances. I should also point out, however, that this is likely the time for the village to reconsider the current set, if the current setbacks are appropriate in this or any zoning district in the village." Okay, the, um, planning board attorney provided a memo regarding these application which reads, "I have grouped these four area variance requests, as they are all from the same builder and relate to the same neighborhood. With the three properties on Taylor Street, the requested front yard setback variances are, in the applicant's opinion, justified by the need to stay clear of the stream in the rear yard. The zero net energy concept appears to be similar to Leeds' design, which, in which conflicts with natural resources are discouraged. The question for the, um, it says, "Planning Board," which the memo was written to, is whether it will support this principle as a planning matter and whether this applicant has made a sufficiently strong case. The single-family residences appear to be compatible with the other homes, even if the variances are granted. The application for 20 Cooper Street is different in that this property does not have a stream in the rear yard. The only justification offered is the desire to build the house as close to the road as possible. This could be left to ZBA discretion to determine whether the 25-foot variance would be compatible with existing homes. However, if 5, 7, and 9 Taylor Street get their variances, this home would be compatible with those setbacks. The fact that the 2001 rezoning pushed back the setbacks is a relevant question. Was the increased setback intentional or an unintentional consequence of a rezoning enacted for other purposes? The planning board may want to consider the background of the zoning change." The motion from the planning board on April 1st, uh, 2014, meetings regarding these applications. Hello, Dave? "Mr. Stephens moved to positively recommend ZBA 1402, ZBA 1403, ZBA 1405, and ZBA 1406 to the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Zeiler seconded, 5 As, 0 Nays, 0 Absent, motion carried." Um, so, would you like to make any comments regarding ZBA 1402?
Sure. Uh, I believe you said that was 5 Taylor Street?
Yes, that's 5 Taylor Street.
Okay, so that's this lot here, as near as the retention pond, and then also has some of the street in the backyard. That, when you read, can you fully cover our commentary as well?
Okay, that's good.
Just so that you know, there are also, somebody mentioned Leeds, these are big Leeds, these are old Leeds buildings.
We appreciate that. Um, so, let's have some discussion on this. One of the things we need to consider are the five criteria that we're supposed to look at, so let me just, you know, throw them out and then open up the discussion.
Do we, do we need a motion for discussion, or are we, are we, do we need a motion?
Yeah, we, we have opened the hearing, so, um, so the five criteria are whether the benefit can be achieved by some means, um, some other means feasible to the applicant, whether there will be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or to nearby properties, whether the request is substantial, whether their, their, whether the request will have an adverse physical or environmental impact, and whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. So, what, what is the board's response? Does anybody want to say anything?
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
We're granting a variance for building, for houses that are going to be built.
Yes.
Does the variance sit with, what happens if for some reason, these folks decide that they're going to sell off the remaining properties with the houses left unbuilt, and somebody else comes in and wants to do something? Does the variance carry, or does the variance start all over again?
The variance would start all over if the houses aren't built the way that they are proposed to us now.
Okay, so, as long as these folks are doing the building on these houses, this variance would apply? Anything else?
Would have to come back to us.
Yeah.
I believe it has one-year duration, so we have to build within the first year after your approval, otherwise, come down.
Yeah, and the, the application itself comes with, you know, a lot of detail.
Yes, 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 no question. I just, I was asking that almost as a, a generic confirmation that we're not granting a variance, but, it's a grant a variance in perpetuity in a sense, but that it's for this particular use, this particular area, this particular time.
Yes.
So, any comments?
The variance is not being granted to these people. The variance is being granted to the land.
Yes.
For this purpose, though, right?
Well, all right, but...
Yes.
These people may disappear.
That's Ellen's question, that is my question.
Yes, but, but...
They need to build it, though. They may disappear after they build it, and that's fine, but if they disappear, I mean, I don't have any problems with you. You know, but if they disappear before they build it, then someone else could come in with a different or similar proposal and would have to come back to the board.
Okay.
Even if they were taking over these same plans and stuff, it wouldn't matter? It would still be, oh?
Yes.
So, I'm completely comfortable with granting those variances. In fact, I can see that moving some of the houses up away from already constructed areas is a, is a plus.
Okay. Dave?
Um, yeah, I, I understand why they want to move it as far away from the, um, retention pond as possible, I don't think it's wrong.
Okay, so, could I have a motion to grant the variance requested in ZBA?
Was the public hearing?
Oh, no, this isn't a public hearing.
Why isn't this a public?
It wasn't, I'm sorry.
Wait, 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 wait.
What's it, doubtless?
I'm pretty sure in the notes.
To discuss.
Because we have to motion for a public hearing.
Oh, so we have, yeah. Okay, so we now need to open the public hearing? Okay.
No, no, we need to make a motion to make the public hearing.
Okay, so we need...
So, we're going to request for the public hearing in May, and then after the public hearing, we can grant.
Thank you.
Can we do it at the time of the public hearing, or do we have to wait?
Well, if there's significant input from the public, then generally you wouldn't want to, but if there's no input, then obviously we won't.
Okay, so, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay? To advertise for a public hearing and hold a public hearing in the main meeting. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion has passed, and could we do the same with, oh yeah, it was on this page. The second item on the application before us is for ZBA 1403, and they are requesting a 15-foot setback variance. So, um, can I have a motion to discuss?
I move.
Second?
All in favor? All right. Do you want to say something about this?
No, nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, you have all heard the five criteria. Could I have a motion to, um, schedule a public hearing on May 13th at 7:00 PM for ZBA 1403?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The third item on the agenda is for ZBA 1405, 20 Cooper Street is requesting a 25-foot setbacks variance. Could I have a motion to discuss ZBA 1405?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything you would like to say? Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to have a public hearing on May 13th, 2014, at 7:00 PM on ZBA 1405?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, and then the fourth item before us is, um, a ZBA 1406, 9 Taylor Street is requesting a setback variance. Could I have a motion for discussion on ZBA 1406?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would you like to say anything?
Not about this variance request, thank you.
Okay, um, so, um, is there any discussion? If not, could I have a motion to have a public hearing on May 13th, 2014, at 7:00 PM on ZBA, uh, 1406?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, the fifth item on the agenda tonight, yeah?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is neighbor notification required to this?
Yes.
Yes. Has, has the neighborhood been notified?
That's what I got to do for a public hearing.
That's right.
That was the question, does one of you want me to come forward on that?
I have one thing I'd like to say before you move to the next item, if I may.
Okay.
I'll try tomorrow, after lunch.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
The other thing I just wanted to say, we had told you that we were anticipating in the near future to request that, of the village board, that the zoning be returned to R2. And so, the, the purpose of the 2001 rezoning was to restrict multifamily and have it be single-family. And so, the way that we want to address that in the proposal, so that we have a concrete proposal for the village board, again, it's still, it's coming into place, but to give you the, the current status of our thinking, is that we would request that there be an overlay, that it only be single-family homes, period, regardless of what the R1 and R2 allow, or the two-family, townhomes, or other typically, with the caveat that we welcome commentary on, that these three lots that are adjacent to multifamily could be two-family or similar with planning board approval. That way, it's not an "of right," which in a way it sort of is now, but I think that preserves the intent of a single-family neighborhood while allowing with, you know, village input, potentially some kind of buffer zone between multifamily and single-family in the form of two-family, if it looks reasonable. We don't have it designed, it's just conceptual at this point.
So you're just, you're sharing these ideas with us?
That's right, I assume that when we actually, you know, when it starts to go through the process to the village board, you'll be in the loop on what is actually being discussed.
So you really are asking for a zoning change to be two?
I believe we're going to, and that it is appropriate.
Is not what you presented to this board in the very beginning when you made your first variance request?
Well, that was a suggestion that you guys made that we should try and do.
Not just that.
Not you. That was a suggestion that we should try and do.
We've, we've mentioned it to you as we've been thinking, I mean, the proper, uh, way to go through the process at this time is to seek variances on what we're doing, that wouldn't be this season that we'd be seeking, you know, basically there'd be enough time for a process, discussing rezoning if it's appropriate, as you see it, and the board, and with planning board and ZBA input, planners, anyway, certainly above board, but again, we're, we're keeping you in the loop so that you're...
Well, my goal is actually build it up before you choose that goal.
Say that?
Build up before you choose the goal.
Oh, well, it's your goal.
That's mine, that's mine.
You're representing, so, well, you know, anyway, as we say, it's an evolving thing, but we want to make sure you were aware of what was being considered.
But I also wanted to remind you...
Yes.
That, and, and Mr. Stephens is here, and when you came before this board the first time, you understood it was a B1, but your question was, could the setback be changed because the 50-foot setback when that neighborhood was being developed was because they wanted it to remain single-family homes, which is why it was assigned to be one? And your point was environmentally and from Leeds and all of those things, you couldn't build as energy-efficient houses with a 50-foot setback.
That's insufficient, yes.
And that's why you came for the 25-foot setback, so you could turn things on the property and, okay, it was at no time contemplated that you were going to do two-family houses.
Well, the board might say you can't have that, they have to all be single-family homes, and I, we, I believe we would take that, you know, restriction, but, anyway, it seemed like a reasonable proposal, but that's all it is, and I understand that the village board would have to make a determination that what's best for the community.
I just wanted a clear role on the same page, what was said.
I hope so, and I appreciate the feedback, because I want to be clear, too, you know, to make sure I...
Well, that's his idea from the zoning point of view, he wants to create a buffer to block those buildings from the rest of the subdivision. And so, he just, that's kind of an idea he's working on.
Yeah, that's something you got to...
That's another day, that's what we need until we lose, but, okay.
So, I'm not concerned about those three lots, if he can figure out a way of doing something with you guys, that would count.
Okay, good. All right, the fifth item that we have, um, on the agenda this evening is an application, ZBA 1404, 11 Lincoln Place is requesting an area variance to convert their attic into an apartment. So, could I have a motion to discuss ZBA 1404?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes. Um, would you all like to join us up at the table?
Hello.
Hi there. Yeah, you can. She can, she can move over. Um, okay, so, um, let me first read the referrals we have received on this. "The planning director provided a memo regarding these application which reads, 'The parcel in question is parcel 86.42-3-7. It is not large enough to allow two dwelling units without a variance for lot size, village code 212-13, paren 4. While this is, um, an R2 zone which allows for medium-density residential, the parcel and house in question do not lend themselves to being a two-family. A Cape Cod-style house is typically built as a one-family home, and what the applicant calls an attic is typically second-floor living space. While I certainly understand the need for additional housing options in the village, I'm not sure that the solution is to transform, obviously, single-family homes on small lots into apartment buildings.'" "The planning board attorney provided a memo regarding these applications which reads, 'If this were an owner-occupied, single-family residence, then the addition of an accessory apartment would require a special permit from the planning board under code 212-41H. That section provides that, quote, 'A special-use permit may be granted to allow a single-family detached dwelling to be convened by adding one additional apartment unit,' end quote, provided, among other things, that, quote, 'The dwelling unit is the legal residence of the owner, and the lot size shall contain at least 7,260 square feet,' end quote. If the home is not owner-occupied, then this must be considered a request to create a two-family house on an undersized lot. To my mind, the existence of 212-41H implies to me that an accessory apartment on a lot too small for a two-family home should be permitted only if the owner lives in the residence, and then only by special permit. Since the owner does not live in the residence and does not qualify for the special permit, the planning board could reasonably recommend this application be denied. It would be appropriate for the planning board to consider what type of density it wants to see in this neighborhood and whether this precedent is the proper direction.'" The motion from the planning board, April 1st, 2014, meeting regarding these application reads, "Mr. Stephens moved to recommend denial of ZBA 1404 to the zoning board of appeals. Ms. Harshaw seconded, 5 As, 0 Nays, 0 Absent, motion carried." So, would you like to speak about this application?
After all what you said. You see, the, when we bought the building, we did ask the building inspector to come and look, see what we could do with it. He said we could allow legally add another room to it, it could be a four-bedroom house, and so right now it's a three-bedroom.
Yes.
Then when we talked to him about, because there's room up there, like to add an additional bathroom, other stuff, he recommended to us to ask for an additional one-bedroom apartment. That will increase, of course, better income, and that will cover mortgages, taxes, and, and all other expenses. And that's, and that, in that time, what we thought of, just let's put an application, maybe we could get an area variance for a one-bedroom apartment in the attic, just to supplement the income.
Okay.
To cover, you know, expenses of the house.
And we're not extending any extra footage outside, or not adding any addition or anything. It's already there, it's, the height is almost nine foot or more, the vibes are already there, the electric is there, the, everything is designed and ready, all the, matter of a couple of bolts.
Okay. Um, yeah.
Question, how, how long ago was this that you spoke to the building inspector?
About a month ago.
Oh, recently, okay, not years ago, okay.
No, no. We met with Harley and Mike there.
Probably Mark. Oh, my, um, I don't see any reason, from the perspective of the ZBA, and from the perspective of the village, I guess, that's it. I don't see a reason to turn this into a two-family house. I'm somewhat familiar with the street, it's, it's a small street, it's, the houses are small, the property is small, and my feeling is that the, uh, even, even, uh, an accessory apartment would be a stretch, but I understand why an accessory apartment should be available if it was appropriate to the building, but, um, I'm not comfortable with the idea of making this a two-family house.
Next door is a two-family house.
That may be, and if so...
And it's R2 zoning, that's the only thing that...
No, no, I, I understand, but that may be a slightly larger piece of property, there may be other considerations. The advice we're getting from the, our professionals is that this, you know, that, that four-bedrooms is acceptable, and that to go farther than that, um, isn't the direction that we might want to be going in, and I'm, um, so I, I personally don't think that I would be comfortable moving to an accessory apartment. Again, if, if, if somebody, if you were living there, you needed it for one of your kids, you needed it for your mother, for I don't know what, I would feel very differently. But as a, as a not-owner-occupied rental, um, I'm not comfortable with supporting that.
Well, you know, a tab and a bar, it's better than like renting it as rooms, the town has already changed all rooms, rental, really, not too many apartments left, so if rented as two apartments, have more apartments in town, also to college, how many are going to live in one-bedroom apartment? Maybe two people, you know, going to live in there?
I hear you, and I understand, but that's not, that's not, my responsibility isn't to be concerned that there be enough apartments for students. My, my responsibility is to do what I think, within the constraints of what's available to us, what I think is in the best interest of the village, and, so I would take the position I'm taking.
Okay, does anybody else want to?
Are you new owners of this building?
Yes, we just bought it, yes, a month ago.
You just bought it, and it was already rented out before?
No, the, the owner who sold it to me, he said he had a problem to keep people in, because the reason for it, he had to ask at least over $2,000 to cover his taxes, his mortgage, and, so people not paying his rent, and he got back and forth to court, and his rent is too high, duty is very high, so it's not doing the work supposed to be, he was expected.
I see.
So, so we thought instead of renting it as a whole house, to rent it as two apartments, and this was said, we're getting $2,200, $2,300, we can rent it for 1,600 or 1,700, like a three-bedroom, maybe one bedroom for a thousand, that cover the expenses, and people can stay longer, and a lot of this problems. That's the idea of coming here. Or the other idea, just make it rooms, or rent it as rooms, and this way you can make the money.
Um, I do not believe that you could rent it as rooms.
Yes, you can, we have four bedrooms, you're allowed, you can allow it.
Yeah, do you, do you have room for the three parking spaces?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, how would you, I, I just, when I went by, I didn't see how you'd fit three cars there, would you have?
You could put two and two, it's wide enough to fit two.
So you'd put two, and then two directly behind them, okay.
Exactly, exactly, you have enough.
So, I have an apartment, maybe like a, a man, a husband and a woman can be there, like one car.
Yeah.
Another family down there, maybe one car, a lot of this traffic, two families, less expenses, uh, people can stay and can afford it.
Yeah.
Not too many people afford the house by itself.
May I ask for a point of clarification? I'm not clear about this. Um, I, I feel like I've looked this up in the code 100 times, and I thought I, I knew it, but perhaps I don't. My understanding is that, um, this needs to be rented as, to a family, and that the, the definition of family isn't based on blood relatives, but it is based on people operating as a family unit, sharing, um... sharing, um, the expenses, sharing the, the facilities, and that renting by the room is an allowable use, um, in other parts of the code. So I need some help with this. Can anybody give me some help with this?
What, what he meant to tell you in this case, like, if we have four rooms, you know, like, four students, for example, they'll come to us and they're rented, all of them together as the whole house, and of course, each one of them will have a room, they'll have a living room.
Oh, yeah, I don't care who sleeps where they sleep.
That's how it goes. It's not like you go, like, a hotel, this room, and every day, and...
Because if you're renting it by the, by the room,
Yeah.
then I believe that falls under the category of boarding house, which is not allowed
No, no, it doesn't go, it doesn't go in the...
It's not going to be a boarding house, but, like, we got a call the other day, four people want to rent it. But instead of renting it to four people, you know, this is even more people than if you rented it to two apartments. And, you know, you rent it for a girl, she has her boyfriend. Rent it for a boy, he has his girlfriend, and so you end up with eight people in there, instead of having two families.
Well, but those bedrooms are of a size that the zone requires, that if there were going to be more than one person occupying a bedroom, whether it's boyfriend and girlfriend, or husband and wife...
Can I stand the door and tell them who's the owner and who's not? I can't. My girlfriend visit me, my girlfriend's off an hour. What can I tell them?
Well, wait a minute, the, you know, they, they, I own the house next door.
Okay.
I don't rent to students anymore.
Oh, okay.
Because this is exactly what happened, and the police told me, they didn't have the right to do that. Somebody could come and visit them unless they were a mother, father, sister, brother. They couldn't live there with their boyfriend.
They can't live there, I understand, but you can't, your girlfriend, they can't come over and visit you.
Well, it's up to the landlord to keep an eye on it and say, hey, you're not supposed to be there.
I understand what you're saying, but we can't be there twenty-four hours.
Well, I know that, but, you know, sometimes it's pretty obvious when you go to...
It's true, yeah, when you see something very obvious, person in and out all the time, you can say something exactly.
Do you live in New Paltz?
No, I live in Marlborough.
Where?
Marlborough.
Uh-huh, and you live in Marlborough?
Why is it too familiar to me?
We have the Citro-Gas station.
Oh, right.
And do you live in New Paltz?
I live in Highland.
Oh, okay, so there is no owner occupancy, and there is no nearby, uh, building manager?
We are in the station fourteen hours a day. I don't think you're gonna get the better management than us. We are there in two seconds.
But as, as we have been called to point out, um, other times when people come to vary, for, for variance, when we grant the variance, the variance is then granted. If you sell the house tomorrow, you are selling a two-family house. I have no doubt that you guys are, are, you know, really conscientious owners. I don't doubt that for a moment. But that's not, as Madam Chairman often says, I hear it in my sleep when we're talking about having a meeting, um, we're, we're grant, you know, this is, this is policy, and, and this is something that we're doing that would, would, could, whatever, extend beyond you. So however much we might have respect for where you operate as a business, or, you know, our, our present, even though you don't live here, we, there are other principles that we really need to adhere to.
See, the problem that I have with what's going on in New Paltz, and the street that I live on is a prime example of it. Once something is broken up like this, it's forever, you know, basically a student rental. Maybe not always student rentals, but that's the easiest way to rent it. They, I should have bought the house up on the corner, because one guy went and, the lot was big enough to put another whole house right onto that house. That's a student rental forever, across the street from me. Same thing happened. He's broken it up, and he's claiming he's owner-occupied, which he isn't. I know it, and everybody else knows it, but there isn't much they can do about it, because he's had lawyers, well, anyway. But this is, this is the problem that I have. I mean, if you don't put a fourth bedroom upstairs, okay, you're not making as much as if you could rent out two, um, you know, two, two apartments. But, um, should be able, especially rented to students, to rent out to four students, um, you can get quite a bit of money, should cover everything. I mean, I don't rent to students. I only want a pair of working people there. I don't care if I lose money on the place.
But that's what we're trying to get, a couple of families to live in there.
Yeah.
Or husband and wife, you know, for downstairs and upstairs, this way, we avoid them to rent to students.
You're never gonna get a husband and wife to, to live if there are students there.
No, but that's what I'm saying. If, if, if you're renting it as four rooms, then you're not gonna find a big enough family to live in there and afford the renting.
Among the criteria that we are to consider, one is whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. And it would seem that, you know, the fourth bedroom does seem to be something feasible to you.
Are we talking about a fourth bedroom or a, an apartment upstairs?
No, I'm talking about fourth bedroom.
They don't, they don't need a...
Which is upstairs.
They don't need, they don't need a variance for a fourth bedroom.
No, they don't need a variance for the fourth bedroom.
The application is about a one-bedroom apartment?
Is, is putting an apartment upstairs.
Yeah, make it an apartment instead of just a room.
Yeah.
The other thing that concerns me is when you put another apartment, I, I don't think there's a law about it. When you put another apartment upstairs, you got a kitchen, you've got heat, et cetera, you know, stove-type thing. You don't have any fire escapes. You only have one egress, coming down the stairs. And if a fire starts downstairs, or a fire starts upstairs, you don't have any other way of getting out of the building.
But, but that's if need to be met. There will not be an issue with a fire escape.
Well, there, but there isn't. For a second story, there's...
No, there's no requirement for it. It's a third story.
This is seventeen-foot drop to, to level ground.
Yeah. I mean, when my kids wanted, when my kids were teenagers and they wanted to live up in the attic, I built a whole fire escape.
No, you did the right thing.
Oh, yes.
Um, okay, so some of the other questions that we need to consider, whether there will be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or to nearby properties. And I seem to hear you saying that that is a concern.
Well, it, it is a concern.
Yeah.
But next door is a two-family, and across the street is a two-family, I believe. So it's the character of the whole area is almost.
Well, two houses isn't really the character.
We, the first one.
Yeah. Um, whether the request is substantial, and, um, it, um, seems to be favored by the recommendations we've had, that is substantial.
And I, I'm sorry, Madam, I would just also like to point out that we are not, we, the ZBA, are not about to take the position we're taking absent other input. We have input from the planning board, we have input from the village, we have input from the planning board's attorney. So it isn't as though everybody is saying, oh, this is a great idea, and we're sitting here saying, no, we won't do it. What we're saying is, what we're hearing and what we ourselves know from our being the ZBA, um, gives us reason to say that this isn't a variance, well, gives me reason to say that this is not a variance, that I would be prepared to support.
Okay, so is there any further discussion?
At this point, then, we determine there'll be a physical, uh, public hearing this time out.
Did we have a public hearing? Well, do we not, do we, are we, do we have to have a public hearing?
If you're going to deny the application, then you don't have a public hearing.
Right, so we have to...
All right, so, yeah, I guess we kind of need to take a, a...
Straw poll.
A straw poll. So Carl, do you have a feeling about this one way or the other?
Okay. I vote to deny.
Okay, yeah. Dave?
I would deny it.
Yeah, so, um, then, uh, just a second. Um, could I have a motion, then, to deny this application?
So move.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
All right.
And all opposed? Then the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We'll see how it tomorrow.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, um, we have minutes from the last meeting. Could I have a motion to adopt the March eleventh, 2014, ZBA minutes?
So moved.
Okay, okay, we'll give Carl the second on that.
Yeah, I'll second.
And, um, is, are there any corrections, or, here it is. Now, this is at the side, but, okay. So are there any, um, discussions on this? Any corrections to the minutes?
Since I wasn't here.
Okay.
Not on my part.
So you can second them.
Yeah, Carl, Carl's seconded.
I was on here now.
Carl did. Carl, Carl is the second anyway. Um, so if, um, there's no discussion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
These are the minutes.
These are the minutes.
Does that mean I can't vote on it either?
Right. Okay, and, um, so the motion carries. And then the last thing we are going to have is, um, if there is any new business.
I actually have a question about old business.
Okay.
And I, I, I had the thing in my hand, and picked up then, I took it down and picked, brought the wrong one. Last year, we granted a varying fence variance on Mannheim, ninety-six Mannheim, South Mannheim.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six?
That's what I worked on.
The corner of...
Uh-huh, the one that, that doesn't have the landscaping yet?
Oh, yeah, I saw that, yes.
And our granting was based on landscaping, going in on the street side to kind of soften the wall-like effect we were concerned a six-foot fence would result in. How do we find out?
I've already, I went there, nobody was home, I left my card. I said, please call me. They haven't called me yet. But it is in the motion. I checked it.
You can tell that they're in the process of planting? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I checked the motion.
When you said in motion, I thought you meant...
Yes, in motion. It, it is in the motion. They have to do it.
Right.
I left my card. I haven't had time to go back. I'm leaving tomorrow for a week. But when I come back, I will hopefully remember.
Well, is it appropriate, I mean, what's the procedure? Is it appropriate for one of us to be doing that, or is it appropriate for the building department?
Well, I don't know.
You're doing it because you want to talk to them about the planting.
Yeah, I want to talk to them about the planting.
And that's great.
Why? Because they want good planting. I don't want them just sticking hodgepodge here and there. You have to understand, when, when, when I, when I say something, the design is in my head already, and I want to express the design to them, so it is a nice design, not what happened down here with the stream, which I was supposed to have input into.
Okay, so Bren, what is the, uh, who do we, how do we, in a situation like this, who is the follow-up person? How do we do follow-up? Do you, do you, do you need to research that?
I could research it, certainly.
Designer.
I think the, one of the building inspectors could go down there, or the co-enforcement officer, but certainly you're welcome to be involved as well. So tell me where you want us to be.
Well, I, I would, I would really like to go over and talk to them, so that, you know, I can express my design. I'm an industrial designer. I build Japanese gardens, okay?
Awesome.
And I would like to go and, and talk to them about it, so that they will do something nice, instead of just having some landscaper come in and, you know, do stupid things. I'm very blunt, as you can guess.
My only concern about this, I mean, I think it's an admirable and, you know, nice benefit to the building. My concern about this is that we follow appropriate procedures. So if it's appropriate for the building inspector to be the one to follow up, and you're happy to follow up, that's terrific. But we have, um, you know, but, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, the building, I'm assuming, I should say, that what the building inspector would do is say, hi folks, um, what's your plan for when the landscaping's going in? Because that was a condition of the variance. These people seemed really interested in landscaping, so they may very well say, oh, yeah, we're gonna start planting May first, because we don't want to plant now, the ground is too wet, or something like that, be wonderful, I'll be very happy with that. And, you know, to the extent that you want to offer your suggestions and stuff, hey, that's lovely. I think that's a terrific idea. But it, I'm asking, what is the appropriate procedure? And it seems to me, what I'm hearing is that the appropriate procedure is that the building inspector...
I think that's, yeah, very important. I think it's very important that doesn't...
Outside of my old life, unless it's in the building permit. And if the building permit's already been closed out on that fence, my feeling is the homeowner's done.
Even though we have it in the granting of the variance?
No, we decided that he could do his fence if he does his landscaping.
Is the question, I think.
Shouldn't have been done.
Because very often, what you guys stipulate as, as an addition to, doesn't get to the building permit process. I mean, Bren would have to back me up on that, but, you know, all of a sudden, if it's not part of, the building inspector doesn't have the, for his inspection, he could very easily have closed that out. I don't realize that.
Well, it's been closed out.
Which is a good lesson for us to communicate with my office.
It's been closed out, it's not a permit.
Yeah, but, you know, you could have had a situation where there was landscaping there, and the snowplow took it out.
No.
That would not, no, but I'm giving a hypothetical here. Just a hypothetical. Should there be lovely planting, and the snowplow was a little bit off, and took out the planting, the homeowner would still, by terms of the variance, have to meet the terms of the variance and put the planting back in. You know, if it dies because they don't have a green plum or whatever, they still have to come up and put planting there.
Well, I would think so.
That, you know, just, just as the variance goes with the property, the conditions of the variance go with the property.
I don't think the homeowner agreed to do it. His word should be what defines it.
But the building permit should be...
But really, the building permit, as far as the building inspector, is what binds the building.
So is there a building permit to put that fence?
It should have been.
Yeah, but the building, the, the, the building permit only, you don't have to get a building permit to put plantings in.
If it's part of the approval for the fence, it should be.
And it shouldn't have been granted, the building permit shouldn't have been granted without that being added, since it was granted on your grants.
Right.
Then we have something to the fore.
Okay, so then I guess my request is, Madam Planner, could you please investigate this and let us know what the, you know, what options, if, if options are necessary, what options we have?
Yes.
It's minutes before Brogan, so, I hope she was here, so check before your time.
And it's either thirty-six or ninety-six.
It's thirty-six.
Thank you.
It's right at the corner of Lincoln Place, and, yeah, isn't it? Yeah, it's, it's facing on South Mannheim.
Okay.
Diagonally across from where Platteville hits.
Okay.
So you two.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so, anything else we want to discuss? I want to discuss how wonderful this meeting was with the professionals' opinions to set the perspective. Well, I think that Bren and Brogan deserve much credit for pulling this all together. So I would pass those kudos on to them. I'm sorry?
Did you hear what they did to our meeting? They gave us a false, um, agenda.
No, I was there, yes.
We had a man on April, April...
April first, yes, that's right. Okay.
We're running your process development.
Yes, do we want to...
Of the forms, you mean?
Of the, of the application. Do we want to report on that?
So, um, I've met with some of the board members and have a compilation of, uh, ZBA forms that you all like, um, and I also looked online. Uh, one of the towns that you were looking at was the town of Milo, which had a lot of, um, great information, and it also had a... which had a lot of um great information and it also had a form that you could fill out online, um which was great. So I've downloaded the free version of Acrobat Pro and I'm building your forms for you. And then I'll bring it to the board and have you look at it and then it'll go to the village board and see how, what they think of it.
As a participant in this process, I wanna say, Vicky and I did our homework. And we made up a list of things that we kept thinking, oh, yeah, that should be on the application, oh, yeah, we want that information. Things like uh violations, are there any violations on the property? The, I guess it's called the plat number instead of just the address.
Parcel number?
Um parcel number. And so we we looked at forms and we used the forms. And then we also did, with with Bren, did a lot of brainstorming. So um when when Bren left us, she had a long list and a big pile. And I'm thrilled to know that we are as far along in the process as we are.
It's coming. That's only step one.
I think if I might suggest. You are a legal body.
Yes.
You very rarely have your attorney present. I think you ought to think about and talk among yourselves about when and how. That's, uh that that was actually something else I wanted to raise.
When and how, what?
You are making very binding decisions. It would be a very good idea to make sure that you are on firm legal ground doing that. You are lucky that you have Bren.
Yes.
But I think in some times, there may be situations where she may be uncomfortable and would prefer you to rely on your legal counsel. And you have legal counsel provided and you have not avowed yourselves of it.
Do we have budget for that?
Yes, you do.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear.
We have an attorney for the ZBA on retainer?
Yes, you do.
On retainer or?
Not on retainer, it is recommended. But when Carl was chair, we found Victoria. She is her DM.
Okay.
Okay, you have a budget that covers that, I think it was, what, three thousand, Carl? I can't remember the amount, but that, that's aside.
Yeah.
It is a philosophical discussion you all need to have as in terms of
What the guidelines are for what we ask for.
What your legal obligations are as members of the zoning board of appeals. And when you need appropriate legal advice.
Right.
So are we, shall we have that suggest, shall we have that conversation?
Let's have that, yes.
Do we need a move to do that?
No, we're just discussing. Okay.
You have.
I think you ought to think about it before you that.
Well, some of us have.
I mean, there are times when it seems to me, either because of counsel that we get, as we did this evening, where we're, we uh the legalities of our positions, you know, of our options, I guess I mean, are pretty clear. There are other times when I think there's no question that, in fact, there was one instance where I had already emailed you to say, if such and such, then can we have our attorney present? So I'm not sure whether at this point in the game, we wanna say that we're kind of comfortable making the decision on a, on an agenda-by-agenda basis. You wanna have a relationship at the very least, and I would suggest that perhaps you should go into executive session and have this discussion with your planner.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can close out the public part of this and.
So I move that we go into executive session for the purposes of discussing our relationship with our appointed ZBA attorney.
Yes, yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, okay, so the motion passed?
What?
Yeah, I didn't think, all we're gonna do is adjourn the meeting when we're done. Yeah, you're you're good to go.
Where did this come from?